We're going to recognize guests and let's pass that paper, I remember. And I'm going to forward to meet with the jail committee.
We've got 50 prisoners this morning. Twenty-two of them are up here in the courthouse. Paul, last week, I'd asked you about the operational budget. You had mentioned to me taking it by the hand and going to Gail and Karen's office to try to figure out what we were talking about. And I just wanted to make sure that you understood what we were asking for.
Okay.
An operational budget is what it costs to run the jail. And before you build anything or operate anything of that size in magnitude, you always, in good business sense, do a projected cost analysis of what it'll cost to operate that jail. Now, in the past, I was out here in these notes, and I can pull the dates out if you want me to, but you said Tom was working on one, he was going to produce it.
There he is right there.
Tom?
Yes, sir.
Your name just came up.
Good, or bad, or other, I don't know.
Paul has told us that you were working on a projected cost analysis for the jail.
Uh, I was working, I was waiting to see what the carryover balance was for the year. I haven't done anything for the jail, no, I haven't, Randy.
So we don't, are you doing it?
No.
Or going to?
I will do it, but I have not done it.
Okay, and when will that be done?
I don't know, I'll have to, I'll give you a timeframe.
Okay, because we've been talking about this for over five months now, and we still don't have one, we've been promised one.
On what?
On the cost of monthly operations for the jail.
You said that in a meeting here four or five months ago, what the cost was.
No, I did not.
Yeah, I mean, you were saying, talking to them about how, what it costs. You gave me a deal where it costs $30,000 a month to run the jail at the current state.
Without the payment.
Yes, yes.
Without the payment.
Yes. I believe analysis needs to be done, Randy, on what it costs per day to do that.
That's what the committee's asking for.
Yeah.
Is we want a cost analysis broken down, it breaks out utilities, insurance, labor, all, any cost that is attributed to the jail that goes through the committee.
I agree.
Whether it's in a budget or not, if it's something that's pulled out of the general fund, then it also needs to be known that that costs.
Yeah, we need to get what it costs.
Therefore, we can have an accurate projected cost analysis of how much funds are needed to operate that facility.
Yeah, how many prisons at $30 something dollars a day does that generate? Does it cover the cost of it?
So...
I haven't worked on it, but I will.
Do you understand what I'm asking for, what the committee's asking for?
I understand what you're asking for, but...
And $30,000 a month doesn't work. We need harder numbers, broke down in detail, cost analysis for them as to what each individual item is and how much it costs.
And with that, I don't know if Rick brought it or not, what the judge used, you know, Rick, that you showed me that one. I understand, that's not all, but I thought when you had, if you had those numbers, and I know Bill called you about the $22,000, when he said the insurance, the part of the jail was $23,000. But on, I mean, is, and that, on that piece of papers pretty well broke down besides the $23,000.
No, no, it's not.
Yeah, then...
It's not, Paul, here again, it needs to be broke down item by item for every expenditure. Now, there's going to be something like 30 or 5 or 40 items, and every one of those needs to have a cost attached to it. You've got history to go back and dig it up to see what it is, because you've had to pay for them already. And we need a projected cost analysis so that we're sure in the next year to know when it comes to budget time, how much does it cost to operate the jail. Do you understand now?
I, well, I may have to meet with you after the meeting, and I'm going to show you what I have, and then you can go over it then.
Okay, what you have is a general cost and a guesstimate. What we need is a true cost analysis of what it would cost to operate that jail. We've got eight years of cost operation somewhere. It should be able to be pulled up and analyzed to come up with a accurate figure, lay inflation to it, and then you're going to know next year how much it costs to operate your jail.
Okay.
And you have to have this, Paul, as part of business. When you run a facility that way, you have to have an exact amount of what it's going to cost for each entity, and every expenditure has to be accounted for. And then you can analyze where your efficiencies are, or where is the opportunity to save money, and how to move forward with it. Every business has one, whether it's in the form of a computer or on the back of a legal pad, everybody's got one. Except us. The quarter cent sales tax that was mentioned in the audit, I'd asked the question last week about the audit, and that it was going to be repaired or adjusted from the monies that was put in from the sale. And that takes care of half of 2015 and half of 2014, but it does not take care of the first half of 2015 to the first half of 2016. So we need to know where that money's going to come from to put back in there to satisfy the deficiencies that's come up in the audit. And will come up in the next audit. Do you understand what I'm talking about?
I think I do.
No, I don't know.
Okay. In the audit, there was $185,700 of a quarter cent sales tax that was collected but was not put into the pledged account to make the payment on the jail.
Right.
Okay, that was for half of 2014 and half of 2015. That's what that audit covered. Now, we have the last half of 2015 and the first half of 2016, and that quarter cent is not in that fund yet.
Was that payment made on April 1st, the jail payment?
Of 2016. Of '16, yes, it was.
So that took care of any past deficiencies?
No.
Yeah, I believe it did, Randy. When I read the...
Listen to me again. I'm going to go over it again.
I know what you're saying, but I remember reading what we signed.
2014, the last six months through 2015, the deficiency was $185,700.
That quarter percent only has to be put in there in order to make the payment. If the payment's made, it don't have to be put in.
Correct.
The quarter cent is pledged to go into escrow.
If it's needed to make the payment. If the payment's made, it's up here.
No, no, you're wrong.
No, I don't think so.
Well, I disagree with you, and you know, if you'd like to call the bank or you'd like to read your pledge.
I did call the auditor, I did call him, I did talk to him.
What it says is, is that the money can be used for maintenance and operations if the amount of the payment is collected. So it's an excess.
Correct.
It's not pulled out in front of it, it's pulled out behind it.
That'd be correct there.
Now, the other thing that I talked about is, is that that was the end of the fiscal year for 2015. So you've got 2,000, you've got six months from the fiscal year ending till the end of 2015, then you've got the first six months of 2016 of this past year. You see what I'm saying? So you've got another year's worth of quarter cent that hasn't went in there that's going to come out in the next audit.
But the payment's made.
Not yet.
No, I mean, we're current.
Yeah, right now we don't. But that doesn't resolve it, is what I'm saying. So your next audit is going to reflect that.
I'd have to see that, because I talked to the auditor, I called him. On that one, you mentioned that once before, and they said, no, that's been taken care of, and the next audit will show it.
But it still hasn't taken care of the first, the last six months of 2015 and the first six months of 2016.
Well, I'd agree with that.
So what I'm saying is, you're going to have another deficiency for this year. You see what I'm saying?
I see what you're saying there, but the $185,000...
The previous one...
Took care of.
Well, the previous one was, if it was an afterthought, it wasn't like it was a planned mission. We didn't plan on having that auction till right up to this last minute. It was a bailout.
It was a bailout, yeah. But we talked about that, Randy, now, I was wanting, I was wanting to make a line out of budget out of that money that we're going to need with our carryover money, but if Farley comes back and tells us when he puts the quarter percent in there, if that's legal, then it's going to take care of it, and if he doesn't, we still do a line out of budget until the payment's taken care of.
As of this date, hold on. As of this date, have you sent a letter to Farley requesting him to make the decision?
Yes.
A letter?
I sent, I gave him written, a question, I wrote it down on paper and handed it to him.
Okay, and when did he say he'd reply?
He didn't say when he would reply. He said he would get me an answer. I did not ask him when he would reply.
Okay, well, we need to follow up on that to see...
What was you going to say, Tom?
When you're talking about that escrow account, Randy, Bank First is not going to take, even if it's legal, all that extra quarter. They're just going to take what it takes to make up the escrow amount. It won't take that whole quarter to make up the short. They'll just take part of it, the rest of it is set over here.
Right.
It will, if the tax income will service it.
Yeah, but it only, it's only going to take part of that extra quarter to make up the short of the escrow. It's not going to take all of it.
Right now.
Yeah, Bank First is not going to take all of it. They're going to just take what's required.
Everybody knows that.
We got also...
Because when Paul says you're going to put all that quarter in escrow, it's not going to happen that way. They're only going to take what's short, they're not going to take all of it.
Right. But we also have to start thinking about here 2024.
Yes, sir.
You say Randy has $975,000?
$925,000.
$925,000. So if we, even if we left in that account, we're going, we plan on making that payment. I mean, you might as well leave it in there and get ready for that.
Yeah, it won't go in escrows over here, it won't go in escrow.
Right, it won't go in escrow, but it'll still be in that, it would still be in the account
Yes.
that we make the payment out of.
Yes.
Well, then, if you want to talk about that dead, I mean, we're taking other actions to try to satisfy that junior loan, but you should have thought of that before you made the junior loan. And you should have had a plan for to retire the debt for that junior loan before they ever hit it one time. Pushing it, pushing it down the road eight to nine years is not the answer.
I, I don't think everybody agrees with that, Randy.
And we're, you know, we're paying out $2,100 a month in interest on that junior loan right now. Every month that's collected out of tax. That's $24,000 a year. That right there is all the money we need to make the payment.
It's all the money, I agree.
Because if we borrowed $450,000, we didn't need to hear that much either. But before $450,000 was ever borrowed for the junior loan, there should have been a plan in place to service that debt before it was ever done, instead of waiting till it comes up here and hits us in the shorts.
No, if you're going to talk about the cut of shillings, we never should have built a jail that big. I mean, that's, it is what it's, we've got to look at what's in front of us.
I think everybody here understands that. The, so we'll wait for a decision from Farley.
That's all I know.
On the COPS grant that Sheila Edwards, the bond rider, came to and asked for information to proceed with it, I wasn't here, but she was here, so I didn't really know what was going on with it. But I did ask y'all, and y'all said y'all were taking care of it. Well, nothing had happened. I asked you in two meetings where we were at on it, and you told me it was in the works, and then last week you said that there, she wanted banking information, y'all refused to give it to her. So I said I would call her and ask her about it, and I did dig into it. And when you fill out a application for a grant, the government requests your banking information. And the reason for that is, is so that when they, when they check to see if you meet the qualifications financially for a grant, they check it frequently. They check it every month, as the whole, the whole time that the grant's being written. So the information that she was refused stopped the grant from happening.
I think she was going into some, the information like Bank First, as you know, make a withdrawal without...
No.
That's what I was told.
No, nothing about a withdrawal.
That's what I was told, Randy.
Well, that's not what she told me this morning and last week. The money, the banking information has nothing to do with the money. It has it so that the government can check to see how much is in the bank.
I was just going by what I was told with Gail.
Well, here again, we just lost an opportunity to get over $100,000 worth of money that could have been donated to us through a grant, and we missed the boat because somebody didn't follow up on it. I mean, how can I find out when you can find out?
I did, I went, I went with the information, Gail. No, I went with the information, Gail.
Well, Paul, it's the commissioner's job to find out why and how, and whatever it takes to get this grant money. So there's a chance of having any extra deputies paid for is not going to happen until next year, when the grant applications come out again. You can't just take something and...
Well, I tried, she wasn't, she wasn't comfortable giving that information out.
Well, but do you stop right there? Are you supposed to stop right there when you're trying to get money from the government? Do you stop right there?
I just think I'll let you look at it.
No, you don't. You keep doing whatever you have to do till you get the money. It's free money, Paul.
We understand that.
And if these grants are available, alls we have to do is go through the motions of getting them, and then we get the money. Then we can hire extra deputies. But if you don't pay attention to it, you don't put yourself into it, you don't get involved in it, you don't get engaged in it, nothing happens.
Well, I wasn't, we were engaged in it. Or you wouldn't even know about the grant, but Sheila.
Well, that's the one who told you about it.
We have, we've been in contact with Sheila for many years, and she's wrote more grants than that for us.
And you had reservations about giving the banking information if she's done that?
I, Gail, had reservations on giving that number, those numbers out.
Well, I had asked if there'd been any grants, Janice Williams brought that information to us, and I presented it to y'all, and y'all moved on it. But she just didn't follow up on it. Now we've lost, we've missed the window of opportunity to get on that program. I mean, that's hundreds of thousands of dollars there that are not being, taken advantage of.
We might have given that number.
That's right, but you're sure not going to give it if you don't have the add-in. Somebody's got to make some movement towards getting something done. It's too late to apply for it now. It won't be available till May or June 2017. I suggest next year, we follow up on that, and we'll find out if there's any more grants dealing with jails and public facilities in the meantime. And from now on, we need to move on. If you don't know the end result of the decision, then start asking somebody. We're all available to help this situation. The quarter cent sales tax, and our sales tax in general, is up by about $65,000 this year, over last year, and which should be a lot better when it does come time to make the payment. I just got this information from our tax assessor. Also, this committee, so-called committee, has never been finalized. Kind of, when the tax thing came up, it kind of went into limbo. I'd like to move forward towards getting the committee assembled, and I'm going to ask that Gail Dixon be put on that board.
She can be put on it.
She can be put on it as an advisor, and, and have input from her on a monthly basis as to what we can and can't do. She won't be a full-verse member of it, but she can be an acting advisor. So I need a motion out of y'all to either form a committee or not form a committee. And we're going to do it under state statutes that are legal.
You talking about the jail board?
Yes.
When would y'all plan on meeting?
We're meeting right now.
I mean, on the, maybe the, when you put together the board you wanted to put together.
When?
Yeah, until it wants to come out.
We have, we have to put the thing together before we can hold a meeting.
I understand that. I said, what, what day were you thinking of having a meeting? What time?
To form the board, is that what you're asking?
No, once the board is formed, when would you be thinking about having the meetings?
Yeah, we'll just ask everybody when they can be there, because they're all volunteers. It's not a paid position.
It's been off since I've read the statute. It's one commissioner in leave, and then one member from each district.
I think that's the sheriff trust authority, ain't it?
Well, it would be the trust authority and, and the jail committee both. Well, we just need one board to serve as both. We don't need to have two different ones. It just complicates things, and we're all working on the same thing anyway. So I guess the question here again is, is you want to move forward with it or you don't? If you don't, then we'll just keep doing like we're doing. If you do, then we'll start the procedures to start putting it together legal. We'll present you with the state statutes to how it be put together. We'll figure out how many members we need, then we'll ask you to serve on it, and then you'll be able to vote on whether you do it or you don't. It's not like you're committing to anything other than giving us permission to move forward on the same one that got there.
Put that on the agenda, someone kept asking you to act on it.
The jail committee.
Well, it just says meet with the jail committee.
If we meet, the jail committee gets on the agenda, and any business pertaining to that committee is part of it.
No.
Well, we got a couple made here.
Well, I mean, we...
Well, then let me, let me say this. If you don't want, if you don't want to make a motion, then make a decision.
That's what I just said.
Rather go forward or not.
We all think more than we can, we're discussing all of it.
It definitely needs to be changed from what it is. Got the commissioners on the same committee.
Because I was, basically what you're asking, Randy, is trying to go together, basically.
Illegal.
I, I agree, I told you I was a legal trustee, and then...
Do the same thing that we've been doing, Paul. Oversee operations of the jail, help where we can, advise where we can. There'll be a lot more people involved in it. I mean, the tax assessor, or, I'm sorry, the tax treasurer of the county needs to be involved in it, because she's the one that knows how much taxes are coming in, and, and I think it's having her as an advisory to serve on it is just, you have to have that. I mean, she's the, she's the lady that knows what the taxes are doing on a weekly basis. And we need to know if the funding is going to be there. It just gives us an opportunity to be more accurate. The sheriff is going to have to be on there, the, you know, and there's a whole list of people that needs to be on there by statutes, and then there's additional people that can be on there. But I'm not asking you to vote for people to be on there today. I'm just asking you a question. Do you want us to move forward with it or not?
I'm asking, I would tell you, what do y'all, what do y'all think? I don't want to make all these decisions by myself.
I mean, basically, when you look at having a, if you look at your own agenda, meet with the jail committee, we're not even a committee. We're just individual, I, I don't, I'm not saying anything carry on other than...
I was always telling you to meet with the committee.
I know, I know, but what I'm saying is, is we're not, we've never been officially put on any type of a position.
Why, you just got bringing it up if you did, if you...
Because...
I'm, I'm talking to my side.
Yeah, I'm talking to her.
I know.
I want to answer her question too. It's because we started putting it together, and then everybody was agreed we were going to get proper legal people to give us some planning for taxes and, and bond issues and tax issues, and they decided to go out perhaps in sales tax. So when that happened, everything went into limbo. Nothing happened after that. And we waited until the sales tax got pulled down, and if it had been done that, it wouldn't matter if it was in two or three days when it was elected on or voted on. One way or the other, we still have to form the authority.
Can I ask a question? Why would you not want to? Why would anyone not? I mean, I'm just asking, because I don't understand why. My, my understanding is that this committee is, it's supposed to be healthy with the situation. So why would you not want to form the committee? I mean, somebody, I just...
I can tell you from a personal standpoint, I'm not going to serve on the trust authority without D and O insurance, because something happened, the jail will get sued personally.
Well, you can always step off.
I will if I have D and O.
Well, that's what I was wondering, I just want to know why, you know, I just can't understand why.
They may have protection because they're elected officials. But when you're on, it's personal, it's different.
As of right now, I don't have a problem with forming a board of court.
Well, let me, let me do this. Let me make this easier. How about we just table it until next week, and next week, by then, the three of y'all will talk individually as to, as to whether you want to move forward with it or you don't.
I got a better idea. Let's just put it on the agenda, form a trust authority. I think, I'm like her, I think we need a trust authority. We need to proceed in a legal, proper manner, so it will be set up properly. That's all I'm saying.
We're going to put it on the agenda for next week. Karen, if you would, word it that we're going to seek legal counsel.
To put the trust authority together.
Together.
If we do this, will it require us to hire a jail administrator other than sheriff?
We have a jail administrator now.
It won't require a state.
Well, the jail administrator now is the sheriff.
Right now, it's training. Well, we're on the subject, are you all comfortable with the attorneys that we were talking to previously? Your legal counsel? You agree to hire it?
I was looking for the trust authority.
Yes.
I have no problem with that.
Anybody else have anything else?
We're going to move on then to new, does anybody have any new businesses? And we're going to go sign the papers then. While we're signing these papers, we can go down to item number nine. Anybody want to speak to five minutes? While we're signing these papers, y'all, thank you, man.
Don't leave.
Let's get that token to the guy after we leave. Karen, there will be no pickup, just wait, Brad. I didn't think so, I'm going to check it.
Karen, did I get your question answered?
Yeah.
We'll get forty percent at the end. I'm gonna probably get a little bit of the end swap part. Forty percent that we can get from the government.
Well, I don't know. The other day, the mayor said something about cutting it to thirty-five percent.
That was just his idea when I'm doing that. I mean, I said that it may be an option, but we've never done it. As far as I know, no county in state Oklahoma does it. Everybody gets forty percent. Because the budget's set, and your budget's ninety percent.
Did you research that?
I've talked to other commissioners. You don't call that research. I've asked the law commissioners how they operate in their counties, and I'm in actual meetings.
Got you, thirty-one percent. Nope, all counties to go forty percent, don't they? On their budget?
On their budget?
Yeah.
At least forty.
At least forty.
Some of them go fifty.
Yeah, he covers a lot of counties.
What is your position actually?
He is our CED manager, which covers eight counties. He manages our CED, which is our engineering. God away.
I knew he was here, but he'd never been in the booth.
Scott Ryan is our CED manager. He goes over eight counties, twenty-four commissioners.
And how you spell your last name?
B R I A N S.
Just getting to take, oh, we just got to three hours.
It's ten, it's ten minutes, right?
Yeah, it's gonna be about ten, yeah, thirty-six.
Yeah, it's gonna be about ten minutes, thirty six.
This whole lot, right? This whole lot.
Just for you. I know they want to be down this way.
This is why I have to print that paperwork. Had the election, we're in a daze.
I'm on my motion. We tried last week to manage. You don't call.
Paul Story?
Yes.
Marvin Noah?
Yes.
Clark McFerry?
Yes.
I need a match on our trip, the corporations.
Martin, I say. I'm not gonna listen to him. I'm gonna save. Anybody want my promotion, I'm gonna save.
I might be. I'll second.
I'm probably gonna call on me.
Clark McFerry?
Yes.
Marvin Noah?
Yes.
Paul Story?
Yes. Yes.
Maybe he's just lost.
I like that, I think those, alright. Out of number eight, now we've already done out of number nine. Alright, this is the, discussing serious signing resolution to terminate sales tax. If you get a chance to read this, Lord, I'll let you read it then. Marvin, that we've read it with two pages. What sales tax we terminate?
The father of the half cent.
Oh, it just says sales tax.
It's the half cent, it's on the ballot. Yeah, that's one, it was I have one, yeah.
You have it? Alright.
Can you read that out loud, Paul, so everybody can hear it?
There, you read it.
Resolution, Haskell County Board of Commissioners met on this date, June twenty seventh, two thousand sixteen, to sign and approve a resolution to cancel special nonpartisan election to be held on June twenty eighth, two thousand sixteen, in Haskell County, Oklahoma. That reads as follows: For the purpose of submitting to the registered qualified electors of said county, the question of levying a one-half of one cent sales tax increase on gross receipts or proceedings on certain taxable sales to be used for the purpose of paying debt service on the existing Haskell County jail bonds, and continuing maintenance and operation expenses for the jail and criminal justice facility located in Haskell County, with the one-half of one cent sales tax to terminate when said debt service is paid in full, authorizing the pledging of said sales tax three-fourths of the half cent for payment of debt service and one-fourth of the half cent toward maintenance and operation, declaring emergency, be approved in any other lawful purpose relating to the same, authorizing the irrevocable pledging of said sales tax for payment of debt service, maintenance and operations for the jail fixing in effect, making provisions surable and declaring an emergency.
No, we, we got it. Should I have a port to it? I see it. Anybody want my promotion, I have a big item on those. You wrote down, Tom, by?
Marvin Noah?
Yes.
Clark McFerry?
Yes.
Paul Story?
Yes. You got that stuff, Brown? On item number eleven, discussing serious same resolution for deputies to work off duty days for law enforcement. There's a statute, so once again, we just have to sign off on it. So I'm gonna make a motion on item number eleven.
You wrote calls? Paul Story?
Yes.
Clark McFerry?
Yes.
Marvin Noah?
Yes.
Fifty, I have one of ours, fifty thirteen, fourteen, fifteen.
Yeah, I'm just propping it, it's a double, it's a lot of them.
I don't know why you took over all that, something there, man, that's...
There's places, you have to sign them.
Yeah, I know, but my computer didn't look over it. I don't even see them, like, three years in the room. Alright, we're just gonna skip down, we'll skip down out of number thirteen. Discuss here going after beds for youth placodes. That's you, Lord.
One, okay.
Go ahead and make the motion.
I'm gonna make the motion.
My second. I'll second it, on item number thirteen.
Question, Clark, is that, who's that purchase from?
I don't know, we're taking bids.
You have one in mind, you could locate one.
Well, I have listed one, yes.
Just had to give us back sheet. Give Karen, put it in the paper, and they have to make those backs.
Have you had it appraised? Would you like to ask some help getting it appraised?
I do, that's not enough.
I mean, we're, we're offering to help.
I don't have a appraisal service or anything of mine, or for a...
We do have, it costs a thing. Just to make sure you're getting this worded in.
But, you do roll call on thirteen, can't you?
Clark McFerrick?
Yes.
Paul Story?
Yes.
Marvin Noah?
All right, on item number fourteen, I'm gonna... Relating place as thought, I'm gonna make a motion to go out for bids on item number fourteen. I'll second. All right, Clark, make second. Marvin Noah, baby. We'll roll call on that.
Paul Story?
Yes.
Clark McFerrick?
Yes.
Marvin Noah?
Yes.
Is this Star Road here? Which one's Star Road? One of them, there's a Tomahawk on the Star Road, I don't... One of them, this is final resolution, another one, that's three twenty-four A claim. That's three twenty-four A.
That's, that's Tomahawk, yeah.
We're on Star Road.
That's, that's three twenty-four A claim for us to get our money back if we, uh...
Yeah. You wanna make that motion there?
Yeah, I'm gonna make that motion.
I think you need to sign there, I missed it in there, I just leave it there. Sign both those spots, I guess, do you? You guys sign, you're the claimant, and then you sign over there, too. All right. You gonna make a motion on number fifteen? Oh, we do fifteen again, we wanna make a motion? Okay. So, right there. Number sixteen, just get us to take possible action to approve resolution for Project Tomahawk Road. If we have this, we should sign it, yeah? You know, it's not gonna want to appear. Lauren, make a motion.
Clark McFerrick?
I'll drive it. Roll call.
Marvin Noah?
Yes.
Clark McFerrick?
Paul Story?
Yes. I guess all we gotta do is get the, get the hell over here and see what's all that. Best man in, I don't know nothing doing. So, you... Ten, 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 ten. Somebody get Gail over here, please, fourth plate, seven row. I think that's first, I think, I think you're gonna make it on. That's not the A, that's not the B.
Clark, if you get us to make...
Right.
I'm sure I'm not gonna get that year.
You just, you just keep then, that's a good one. Do that.
Sorry?
Can I, can I get them? I, I mean, I can, but they'll cost money. We have publications that show us seven months, what everything sells for in the marketplace.
No problem.
Very big book, has all types of machinery. You can take four, several hundred, four, four after, an average amount.
Well, it's just a good guideline. That's not your safe ground, you figure, so...
The name of the book? I'm sorry.
I need to see if you have anything to do with it.
Okay. Be good, 'cause I was gonna ask you to stay back.
Okay? I've just, I mean, I know this is dry, but I just wanna be polite, come and work.
Thanks for the tip.
It's kinda... These years, that's what grass is, while we're doing three years, I... That's what you told me, really. You leaving all the...
Oh, this is for the auditors. This is what they're, they've done audit of this.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, this is for thirteen, fourteen, and fifteen, that's what they're auditing right now.
Mm-hmm.
So, this is the three years that they're auditing.
Okay.
It's done, gone.
Okay.
They just needed, they just needed it approved for them, that's, that's their stuff.
You wanna say hi to all the voters in Haskell Counties?
Hello? All the voters in Haskell County.
Well...
Not quite all.
We might get our own reality TV show out of this.
We may.
We may do it. We may.
What are we gonna call it?
It's coming on right after E-Haw.
We're gonna call it the Days of Haskell County.
All right, Days of Our Lives, huh?
That's how we'll pay off that debt, let's do it on TV.
We might get rich. But that's all that is, it's for them. They brought them to bed, made a sign, and they had, it had to go through the... That's all it is.
Just taking that, I don't remember seeing that first, but I got it.
It's actually the, uh, financial statement for the years ending, those three years ending.
Okay, I'm gonna make that motion on item number twelve. Roll call on, get ready.
Oh.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
Thank you, Miss Gail.
Yeah, I make the motion. All right, I'll roll call then.
Paul Story?
Yes.
Clark McFerrick?
Yes.
Marvin Noah?
Yes.
All right, we're at the end of the agenda. You got everything you need, Scott?
I'm good, you know.
What do you got, the DA?
This is, this is... Whenever you get him ready, you call him.
Okay.
Scott, have a good one.
Stay warm.
Get by long, better run. I'm gonna make a motion with Jeremy.